So, roll call to open the meeting. Booth?
Aye. Here.
Modell?
Aye for region.
Rainey?
Here.
Ote? Johnston? Here. And did I miss anybody?
No. And we know Eva is not here yet, but she will join us later.
We'll send her a message right now.
We did the roll call, but let's officially call them to order. I'll call the Concord School Committee meeting to order. Note that we are being recorded and broadcast via Zoom.
And I'll call the Concord County Regional School Committee meeting to order.
And before we take a motion, I just want to mention and I guess apologize to anybody who's logged on watching us already at this point waiting for more, that we do have an executive session first at the beginning of our meeting this time. It is on the agenda. If that was confusing and you're hoping for excitement right now, apologies. So, we're going to go into executive session once we move that. And hopefully, I would say be back within the next 15 to 30 minutes. So, do we have a motion? And I can pull it up right here. Here, I'll read it. We need a motion for both committees that the Concord School Committee and Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and return to open session roughly between, I would say, 5:20 and 5:30.
No problems.
Sorry, it's not exact, but we can see how long this goes. Do I have that motion?
So moved for both.
Seconded for both.
Perfect, thank you. And roll call. Booth?
Aye for both.
Rainey?
Aye for both.
Johnston?
Aye for both.
Modell?
Aye for region.
And I saw Eva join us. Mustafi? Oh, I see her name at least. Eva, you're on mute if you're trying to vote.
And then, Eva, we're going to move over to the exec with the recent login that you saw.
Okay, we haven't heard from her, but we'll say that motion passes because it will either way.
Good.
Okay, so we will move to exec. Everybody has the link to executive session. And we will be back on this one as soon as we can, roughly 5:30.
Good. See you over there.
All right, thank you.
Be back.
Okay, good.
There's David.
We do have everyone. Oh, there we go, good. Great, then we will welcome everyone back to session with apologies to those who were waiting for our delay there. We both had technical difficulties and then the discussion went a little longer than expected. So, apologies for those who were waiting. We'll jump right back into the agenda. Are there any public comments? And to review for anybody who hasn't done this before, if you're watching and would like to make a public comment, you can hit the little button at the bottom to raise your hand. And we will see your hand raised in our little list here. Any comments? I don't see any. If we've missed anyone, well, raise your hand again and we'll keep watching a little later, but I think we're free of comments. So, we have minutes.
Yeah.
Everybody's...
Yeah.
Sorry?
I think we are the only thing we ever join, right?
Yeah, a couple joined. Go ahead.
So, kind of a motion to accept the joint committee meetings from 5:20, 6:20, and 6:20 minutes.
So moved for both.
Seconded for both.
Thank you. Any discussion on this?
Thank you to our unseen scribe, Erin, who behind the scenes continues to support us.
She is also on vacation.
Right.
Finally.
They'll hear that in the recording.
So, here in the recording, though, Court, thank you.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so, go through this. Booth?
Aye for both.
Ote?
Aye for both.
Rainey?
Aye for both.
Modell?
Aye for region.
Mustafi?
Mustafi, aye for region.
Johnston, aye for both. We had two items of correspondence. One was a business solicitation and the other was asking to be in touch with the committee, to which we responded, they are, by sending us the note. But we haven't heard anything further, so I don't really know what the intent was there. Seriously, liaison reports. I don't know anything.
I'll just kick off with a general congratulations to everyone for getting through the year, since we haven't met for two weeks and didn't actually... We haven't met since the last day of school happened. And I think, hope that most of the administrators are also finally on vacation this week.
Indeed, they are.
But wow, what a marathon that last few months was. And I just want to share a huge congratulations to you, to Jared, to all of the administrators, to all of the teachers and staff, and the students and the families.
Yeah.
For getting through quite a year, like we've never...
Parents, teachers.
Yeah.
Great.
That's my only chair's report.
Thanks, Eric.
Anything else from liaisons? Is anything else?
Well, for lack of a better time in the meeting to put this forward, David, can you tell us your timetable with the committee? We know you're looking to other public service.
Today is the election in Carlisle. I am unopposed in my bid for the select board.
Good luck.
If I lose.
That'll be embarrassing.
We're rooting for you, David.
You know, expecting a North Korean-style outcome.
You and Putin.
Yeah.
And how does...
I don't want to be for life. I've been around that board long enough. But, yeah, so, technically, but the actual... I'm actually unclear on this point, but I believe that the Carlisle School Committee will... Carlisle School Committee, by the way, it's a contested vote. I mean, contested race, sorry. There's three, three for two spots. So, once that's known, well, that will be known sometime this week, I presume. And then, next week on the eighth, I believe the eighth is the first meeting of the new Carlisle School Committee.
Oh.
And we'll then vote regional members. So, I'm actually on till then, I believe, because who else? It's kind of like with Wally, right?
July 8th?
July 8th, yeah.
Okay.
So, if you have anything that comes up, I know we have a little session, Court, right, on the eighth for policy?
We have a policy meeting coming up next week, correct?
If anything else comes up on here, but after that, there'll be somebody else.
All right. Well, I don't know how many opportunities we're going to have to express our thanks, and I regret that we're doing it electronically, but I know I speak for everybody, even though they'll speak for themselves when I say thank you. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for being tough in all the right ways, asking the right questions at the right time. I'm not just stating fluff here. This is, this is real. You made us think and stay on our toes, and for that, we're very, very grateful. To be, to be tough and have a good humor and not take yourself too seriously as you took the schools and the kids and the staff so seriously, I think is an example that I personally want to bear in mind as I go forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Court. I did enjoy the time.
I will also jump in and say, David, I've just really, I've enjoyed the perspective you bring and the experience, too, and how you're very clear with us many times about saying, "This is important, let's focus on it." And that that you're talking about is not important, let's not waste our time on it. And that's really helpful sometimes. So, your, your perspective has been refreshing and really helpful throughout this. Thank you for putting so much time into us.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, I have a few, I'll make a few remarks at the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
I concur. We're going to miss you, David. You're very, you've been a very valuable member this year, and I think, I think you've made us think about some things that we wouldn't have thought about otherwise, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep.
I am going to miss my mentor.
I'll be around, Eva.
You'll be able to find him.
You'll see him, don't worry.
What is it over there? Select board?
My job is to keep the money coming from the club. I understand my job.
All right. Okay, you're on, you're recorded for that.
I want to thank you for your service both this year and your previous service to Carlisle. Most of, many of those students are now part of the region. And you have brought a perspective that, that often we don't hear about details of sort of juxtaposition between Carlisle and Concord. I think that's helpful. Certainly informs us of what students in Carlisle have experienced before they get to the region and some of the differences that we sometimes lose sight of at our, at our committee level here. I know that high school doesn't lose sight of it, but of the differences between what we're doing K-8 and what you're doing K-8. And, and I agree, you are very helpful in some of the thornier discussions because you take things head-on. And Carlisle Select Board will be lucky to have you.
Thank you.
I won't miss you. Well, I won't miss you. I'm going to be gone soon enough, too. They'll all miss you.
Yeah, I thought you were moving, actually, to Select Board.
I am, but I can't do it until after town meeting.
The, the...
I was.
The two, I thought you were moving to, are you, I thought you were moving to Select Board.
No, 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 no. That would be, that would be a little uncomfortable seeing as my wife is on the Select Board.
Oh, okay. Is she a selectman?
Yeah.
Like person?
Yeah, no, it's because...
Oh, she is. Oh, yeah. No, it's, it's actually quite interesting that the two towns, because we're so demographically similar, but there are cultural differences. There's no question. There's no question that there's cultural difference.
Absolutely.
Most definitely. I go to Carlisle to relax, David.
You know, I would not have guessed, I mean, I've been around both towns for a long time, and I certainly experienced Carlisle-Concord juxtaposition in 2008 when I was the chair of the Finance Committee. And we had similar problems, and we probably told you this story, but I'll say one more time, is my daughter, who's now a freshman, was like, whatever that is, what, 12 years ago, you know, three, right? So, she was just cute as a button, and I would meet regularly with the Concord Finance Committee because I was trying to get them to lower the school budget, actually, the high school budget, so that our assessment would be lower, because we were in pretty tough straits. And they were really not having much of it, and it was pretty contentious. And I would bring my daughter and sit there because it would diffuse everything. She was so cute that nobody could really get upset. It's like, you know, Clarence Darrow, when he had a tough trial, he used to put a pin in his cigar and he would wave his cigar, gesticulate in his closing argument, and the jury would just follow the cigar, you know, and they would lose sight of what he was, because he had a weak argument. So, if I had a weak, I had a weak argument, you know, so I brought Ray Ray. It was just focus on her, and I would get at least, you know, something, what I wanted, so.
That's good.
All right, we're going to keep that in mind for our strategy for next year.
Find a cute three-year-old, right?
There we go.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you. Before we move off of reports and liaisons, we did get a question from the Select Board as they're looking at the warrant for now September and trying to figure out which articles are urgent and not, et cetera. They wanted to know our opinion on the stabilization fund article that the Finance Committee is bringing forward. So, again, this is not our decision by any means, but as they're looking at whether or not to move the stabilization fund article, and this is CPS, sorry, this is for the middle school stabilization fund. They wanted to know if we, if the schools have an opinion on whether or not that is critical enough to keep in the warrant for September. So, Wally and I wanted to bring that to this group.
The Select Board's moving it, I believe, not the Finance Committee.
Yes. Mike Lawson, yes, it's a Select Board article, not a Finance Committee article.
Hi, Mike, sorry. Okay, I stand corrected.
Thank you.
I thought the Fin... Okay, so the Finance Committee maybe have requested it. It is a Select Board article, I stand corrected, and they wanted to know our opinion on it.
Could I make a quick remark?
I love it.
So, what's happening is the Select Board has asked all of the folks, committees and individuals who have articles on their town meeting warrant to let us know whether or not they consider their articles essential or not. And in addition, the town moderator has put together her draft consent calendar, excuse me. Next week, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, along with myself and the Clerk of the Select Board, together with Carmen, are going to meet to review all of these articles. And then, after we have met and kind of discussed it, the full Finance Committee and Select Board is going to have a joint meeting where we are going to try to propose a final consent calendar, a set of articles that could be postponed until a special town meeting, and then a set of articles that we believe need, need to be taken up at town meeting. And so, one of the articles Monday, when the Select Board met, was the stabilization fund for the middle school. And before we just, we had a point of view about that, we wanted to check with you folks to make sure we understood where you were on it. So, I'm sorry for the, but that's the kind of the background of this.
Great. Thank you, Mike, for the background. It's really helpful. And that was Mike Lawson, Chair of the Select Board, in case we didn't identify him.
Yes, Mike Lawson, 1695 Lowell Road, Chair of the Concord.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, so, I'm happy to jump into the thoughts, but I'm also happy to let others chime in first. So, Court, Cynthia, Wally, do any of you have thoughts to share on that?
I do, but go ahead.
Oh, okay, well, I'll start off with my initial take on this, which is that I guess we, we would be, I think, we would be hard pressed to say this is a dire essential article for this year, given the situation. But that said, I feel like for the town, the fiscally responsible and prudent thing to do would be to still move this, because at the end of the day, the need for a middle school has not changed, and we still need to plan for it. If anything, it might even be more important now to be creating a stabilization fund, given the needs coming forward. So, that, that's my initial take on it. But I wanted to get everybody's opinion before we give a, a school committee opinion.
So, I'll weigh in here. I think that we definitely, I think this is essential. I think we need to build up a fund of at least $4 million. The high school is about $2, so the price, the back of the envelope math says this is double that. So, I think it's going to, it's going to need to be populated over several years. So, I think this is essential and should be moved, unless somebody is saying that the high school, excuse me, the middle school project isn't essential.
Yeah, and I don't think we are going to say that. I think, I think the sooner we start with this, the, the better, and it can be scheduled out differently, knowing that it might be a little, a little longer. But why not, why not have this? As we're not spending the money, it's just, it's going to be there and it's available to ease the pain of those bigger years and the, and the debt financing, I assume. So, I would say, why not, why not move it?
I have little to add. I'm strongly in support of it. I think it's fiscally responsible. I think we can probably do it and should. Ideally, we would evaluate this on the merits and the merits alone, but I think we're sensitive to larger community needs, so if this needs to be weighed in context in the future with more information and a look at how this fits within other capital projects and investments like this, we can do so if, if it's appropriate in the future. But right now, I'm unequivocally in support. I think it's a responsible thing to do.
Yeah. Anybody else? I don't know that we need, I think all we need to do is indicate to the Select Board, Mike, let us know if you need us to do a motion. That's fine, Wally. That's, that's the kind of input we need. This is not a formal matter. All that's going to happen is there's going to be a consent calendar, and then there's going to be a motion that will contain all of the articles that the Select Board and the Finance Committee believe could be postponed. And then, there will be a set of articles we will deal with at town meeting. And of course, with the consent calendar and the motion to postpone articles, individual articles can be taken off either of those motions if it's so requested by a number of the members of the town meeting. So, it's just going to be a proposal to town meeting. There's no need for official vote. So, your input, I think, is quite good, and thank you very much. And you had a question, I think, about Article 28, which is the high school parking lot, and we voted quite a while ago now to pull that. So, that would not be something, we would not move that article by prior vote. Okay.
Okay, great. Look, I've got some background noise. I'm going to stay mute for a minute if you want to run this for a sec, Wally.
Okay. So, anybody else have anything to add from a liaison report perspective? So, why don't we move to superintendent's report?
Thank you. I'm going to do some high-level updates of things that have evolved. It's interesting, Heather mentioned that school ended less than two weeks ago, and time has gotten so different now that that's, that feels like it's been a long time, and it's actually been those 10 days, but all, the routines have all changed, so it does feel like it's been longer. Just a few comments on the last few days that we had. I feel like everyone's to be commended for the efforts to put forth a really fun, engaging last week of school for kids. I attended a whole number of special events, virtually, of course, but some really creative things happened, and I think families felt connected and kids felt connected in a, in a way that I don't think a few months ago we would have known was even possible. I did, too, the last day for staff was the 19th, and I was able to attend all the staff meetings, and there was just a lot of, you know, a lot of deep breaths taken, a lot of, a lot of words of thank you, and, you know, starting some conversations for what's coming next year, which we're going to get to in a little bit. But it was just a nice way to wrap up and for the principals and I to be able to, you know, really express our heartfelt gratitude for the efforts of the staff to recreate a learning environment under the conditions in which they did it. So, again, thank you to everybody. I think it was such a combined joint effort of families, kids, teachers, you know, we're, we're feeling good about what happened. We know that it, you know, if, if we end up remote again, we know we need to get much closer to a full school day and a, or at least a full load of curriculum and making sure that that, you know, holds, holds water. But we know a lot more now than we did, so I think that's within range. Hopefully, we won't need to use it, even though we're going to make that plan, because we're all hoping to be together. Just some updates on the other things that have moved along, community-related things next. We continue to provide food this summer, Tuesday and Thursday mornings, really running on volunteers, with the exception of Bryce and his assistant, who are actually trading off, so they get some vacation time. The high school kids are helping us pack groceries this summer, so I've got a crew of high school kids getting community service to pack the bags. Staff are still volunteering out at the driveway to hand the food out to folks. And boy, we just can't say thank you enough that things just evolve in this environment. So, OpenTable approached us last week after we had a successful food drive, which probably brought in two weeks' worth of food, both from Carlisle and Concord, so we're grateful for that. And then, OpenTable reached out last week and said they could supply food for the rest of the summer and beyond and into the school year if we wanted to remain a, a smaller food pantry for those in need. So, we have a lot of things to talk about and think about, but it feels really good that we've met a need in the communities, and it does seem there, I don't think any of us are totally surprised, but it's become very tangible, there is, there is a need for food provision in the communities of Concord and Carlisle. And it doesn't mean that food is not accessible in neighboring options, but the convenience and the ability for people to get it, you know, proximate has been really important. We actually weren't going to run the summer, and we did because so many people reached out that it was important to do, to continue. So, wow, we're just grateful. Graining Ground is sending us produce beyond what you could even imagine, so those donations are coming in. We're just feeling so well-supported. It's been just an exciting process to see continue. So, the campuses are starting to get some life back to them in really slow ways and somewhat by design. It's not all under our oversight, but the facilities are. The fields are opening up to youth sports, so we've approved safety plans and are allowing those groups to get started out there. Obviously, under the guidelines, contact sports is still not allowed, but practices can happen at distances and appropriate. Concord Rec opened up their camp at Alcada and the High School this week, and two days successful so far. Concord Children's Center opened up yesterday at Ripley, so that's, that's big news. They've been working really hard to get ready, pretty daunting task. I did decide that Ripley is going to stay closed through August 3rd, so that just felt like a good touch point. We're all working remotely, and right now, under Phase Two, second part of Phase Two, we'd only be allowed 50% of the office staff in, and it just had some more logic to let us get into July, all still be remote, and I'm hopeful by August 3rd, all of us can go back. So, that's kind of the approach, is everybody remote is actually easier than part in and part out to some extent, so, and it allows us to get our vacations under our belts and to also do all the practices and protocols we need to put in place and make sure that they're ready from the beginning of employees returning rather than, you know, trying to back, step backwards. So, we're putting together an electronic self-reported screening tool that'll be an app through Google Forms. Signage needs to go up. We need to just review directionality. I don't, we walked Ripley last week. It's such a big open space. I don't see a lot of places. We need one-way direction, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't put arrows on the floor and just remind people to stay distanced. So, all those pieces, just basic workplace safety protocols need to get put in place. We're aiming for August 3rd. We'll keep an eye on the governor's phasing in of things and obviously the health data as well. And then, unfortunately, my last update is about an incident that we became aware of last night, a social media post by one of our high school students, racist and homophobic and very disturbing and distressing. We followed protocol and immediately notified the family and police, and they are highly engaged and very responsive, I would say. However, it is just as unacceptable to us now as it was less, you know, about a month ago when it happened, and we're going to continue to send these very strong messages out to our student community and to our community at large that we're not going to tolerate this. I do think it's an, an opportunity for me to share some updates of what's happened, even in the last month. Things continue to feel like we've, we've turned a different discussion here. So, our willingness to name issues as racist and have safe spaces, we've had two groups of kids meet with adults and share what it's like to be a student of color in our high school. One was recorded and is actually running on the radio station this week. Really powerful opportunity for the community to hear some of the experiences and some of the impact that we have when we're either... and some of the impact that we have when we're either blatantly racist, you know, exercising systemic racism or, you know, sometimes it's very casual microaggressions that aren't understood and the impact that they're having. So that I felt, I feel is a turning point to some extent. In addition, we supported the Intersections Club, who did that broadcast. They also organized a peaceful protest in Concord Center in the middle of June. As a result of the meeting we had with Mecca families in early June, a number of things are in place for the fall to start off and open up. At their suggestion, it was an exciting session with them. They came with opportunities and ideas, which was, I think, gave us action steps we can take. And so we're planning diverse panels of speakers and students of color, roundtable conversations for kids, teachers and families, really looking at integration of activities. Athletics was named as a more positive aspect of our integration and inclusivity and maybe could be the model for, as probably imperfect as it is, as one of our positive areas and maybe a model for how we might do a better job in other places. The creation of a Black Student Union at the high school and in conjunction with that, a really safe space for really brave, open, honest conversations that I think is how.
What are we going to tell the people the truth? That it's okay to take their kids back to school? Dr. Fauci.
And I think that, you know, we're trying to be sure that safe space is available. Also, since the end of May, we put in place staff professional development over the summer. Donna, Paula Martin is hosting professional development in How to Have Difficult Conversations About Race with Students. So those are virtual opportunities for staff at no cost. And all staff are welcome to participate, support staff, teachers, everyone. The District Cultural Competency Committee is meeting all summer. They met just a few days ago. And this is interesting. Because of the virtual aspect of it, Kristen really just opened it up wide and 66 people were in attendance at this meeting just last week. So the staff and teachers are highly engaged. So there's a lot of things happening, and I wish I hadn't needed, you know, a negative experience to share all those opportunities. But we're taking this work really seriously, and people are highly engaged. So that gives me hope that we can continue to get messages out to our kids that, you know, certainly blatant racist comments on social media are unacceptable. But just as unacceptable is that in some cases we're thinking this is funny in some way or really not understanding what this really has for impact. And I just will close with the final, you know, real congratulations to the kids who reported it. They actually responded on social media and did what we would hope, which is to push back and say it wasn't okay. And then they reported it, and we were able to intervene. So I think hopefully we're also empowering them to help us to stop it on the unfortunate occasions if it should happen again, which is obviously the goal that it doesn't. So those are my updates. Short of all the future talk we're going to do later on about the fall and the budgets.
Thank you, Lori. I just have a question about staff and training.
Yeah.
You mentioned that people would have access to this free training. What training is required of our teachers in this area?
So there isn't a per se requirement. It certainly is part of their evaluation process. I think that's the place I'd go to reference accountability factor because certainly cultural responsiveness and competency is within the evaluation tool itself. In the past, and we may want to revisit this, the contract had a required diversity course that Edco offers through Ideas. The language is still there, but it's not a hard, fast requirement. It's a suggestion. So that may be something we want to look at as we look at teacher contracts over the next while here. Because we, you know, the impact of that, we believe, was strong and powerful as people were hired on that that course was required. So something for us to talk about.
And I think it's something that's important for all staff.
Absolutely, absolutely. And some of the other dialogues that we are having is to be sure that we capture training on time that isn't just voluntary, to your point. So we're looking at the PD days next year. You know, it's a little tricky with the juggling act of all these priorities we have in opening such a different year. But we're definitely looking at what those options are during, you know, the built-in days when everyone is engaged. And we don't have to just rely on those who have the ability to do it on voluntary time. So.
And I think I'm seeing it, but, you know, I could see you're weaving this in to the task force. And I think it's so important that we continue to do that and not make this a separate thing that we have to turn toward. It should just sort of be part of this effort so that it's really front and center.
Correct, totally agree.
Lori, would it be safe to say that this has been central to, or among the things, central to cultural competency initiatives, but now has gained even more importance?
Yeah, you know.
Fundamentally changed the strategy?
Right, correct. Kristen and I had a nice clarification among ourselves. Cultural competency is still an overarching umbrella. That's still a huge priority for us. There are pieces to that, you know, and just making sure we're aware of unconscious bias and that many of the other topics we'd already started on. I think what's evolving, Court, that we had not really named, it had been on the list but not really named, and now it's bubbling right to the surface, is this anti-racist discussion. And teaching, I don't want to miss that part. I want to stress that we do plan to teach our kids anti-racism in a way that we haven't before. And my one example, a kindergarten teacher dove into all the resources we sent out and found a really social stories are very scaled down ways to share social situations with very young children. And she used one of those on racism with her kindergarteners before school was out. And because they were home, it became a family activity. But I know we've never talked about race with, I mean, that gives me such hope. If our youngest kids have this discussion about what racism is and the impact it has, and it wasn't really sugar-coated, even for the little kids, of the negative impact of racism and yet had that, you know, what does equality really look like in a very tangible way? So I'm excited. I don't want to use the word excited because it's the wrong tone. But it's been a really powerful month of really watching people from all directions want to be part of our next steps.
The research is pretty indisputable that racial awareness takes, occurs within the first three to five years of life. If that's a given, then the question becomes, what do we do with it? What do we do about it? When I joined the Concord Public Schools and Concord Carlisle Schools in 1985, I was expected to take an anti-racism course. And that's actually what it was called way back then. Offered through the schools by an organization called EMI, the Eastern American Justice Initiative.
Right.
And then you are doubtless in touch. And I know Kristen is in touch with an ad hoc organization in town, Concord Organized Against Racism. And there are community discussions occurring that I think very appropriately have connected up with you. A number of teachers independently are participating in those activities. And then actually offering a lot of leadership in that community arena.
Yeah. There's also, you know, there's a Thoreau Parent Teacher Group meeting regularly now. They connected up with a middle school group that started up. So there's a, it's not certainly just a school-based conversation. It's a community-based. And just the EMI evolved into Ideas out of Edco. So it's the same group and the same course that we're talking about, looking again at, you know, whether we mandate that at some point in the future of that. But yes, that's the same process. And good news and maybe not so good news that it's been a discussion since 1985, and we're still at it. So.
We're still at it, yeah. Thank you.
Lori, have you talked to the Concord, like Jim O'Shea or anybody in Carlisle about their experience with the OLWEUS program?
I have not, but I certainly will.
Yeah, so Carlisle, it's tangential maybe, but Carlisle embarked on this. It's O-L-W-E-U-S. It's Swedish, I think, or Norwegian. It was a bullying, it's anti-bullying, but it's really a cultural thing. And it's a three-year program that I think they've completed the first cycle, and they're going back again now, doing it again. But it's treating everybody with respect. It's at every level, and it's in every interaction. So it's with the custodians, it's with the teachers, staff, each other. It's woven into the curriculum now. And, you know, they report, they report good results. I take, you know, absolutely take Court's point that there's so much, you know, family biases that we really have limited ability to do something about. But we do have those kids, you know, six hours, well, we used to have them for six hours a day. Who knows how long it will happen. But, you know, it's a lot of time. So, you know, looking at that and it, you know, it would be, I presume, a full initiative, like a K through 12 thing. Because you really have to get, it's like, you know, I spent some of my earlier career in a, in a management area, but in quality, like in quality. And the quality is like a religion to the quality people, right? And it infuses every aspect of how they do it. And they really, those same things, they're Norwegian, most of them anyway, they really dig into like the fabric of how you think about things and that get you to change. And that's how this program reminds me. And again, don't know the applicability, but it's a long-term thing. It takes a few years, but, you know, it'd be worth talking to Jim about it.
Yeah, I certainly will.
The audience are pretty happy with it.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Anybody? Let's move on to works for discussion. And again, Lori, the COVID task force update.
Right, so what I wanted to do tonight, the DESI guidance came out last Thursday. And I thought it made good sense for us to spend a little time going through it. So I have a PowerPoint that is mostly DESI provided. I expanded on a few parts of it where I wanted to give you more detail than they put into the slides out of the depth of the document. I've been on two, and I'll screen share in a minute and do the full presentation, just a little context of where we are in terms of that guidance coming out. I've been on two calls with the commissioner twice since the guidance came out so that we're feeling well-supported by the state at this point, getting a lot of questions answered. I think adding to the list of things they're still talking about, it's become a really great back and forth and dialogue. So we're very appreciative of that. I'm obviously working with some other superintendents, too, to start talking about implementation. And most of all, the task forces will all be looking at these. So any of the groups meeting tomorrow, the working groups, building-based groups, all are prioritizing a review of the document so that each group can take a look at how it might pertain to their area of focus or for the building-based groups on a bigger picture level. So I, let me pull my slides up. I'm going to have to screen share. And I just find I can't talk and do that usually. So. This alone, I think, just that DESI provided us a comment set of slides was really indicative of the intent of some overarching umbrellas to work under. I do know we've talked some on mandate versus local decision-making. The commissioner was asked that point blank today. And the answer that we got was the health directives in here are mandates. As we get into the educational pieces, which I'll talk about, the document's at a high level of educational delivery. That's where we're going to have some local control. So I think clarity on that was really helpful. So let's just go through slide by slide. This can be a conversation, obviously, not just me talking at you. So DESI's really been working with, and I've now been on two different calls because I also listened to the State Board of Ed this morning. The commissioner was on with, and the Secretary Pizer and these two doctors that both met with the superintendents last week and were on again this morning with the board. I think what happened over the last month or six weeks was a real intent that the health data and health community was going to really be the core of the decision-making on the ability to return or not return to school. I'm impressed with both of these professionals who are very thoughtful and very rich in their experience and expertise they lend to the conversation and an ability to really allow for exchange on the rationale behind the recommendations, which I think really helps everyone to vet them and grow more and more comfortable. They also have had a working group of 45 stakeholders on a consultation basis. And then a lot of collaboration throughout, you know, superintendents, administrators, parents, experts in public health, teaching and learning, and with the teachers' unions. So what is outlined in this short set of slides are goals for the fall. And I think that's probably the most, a big, important thing for us to highlight, the health and safety requirements that they're outlining as of, and I think we're always going to put a big asterisk next to it, as of June 30th, this is where we are. Reopening plans, upcoming comprehensive guidance, because clearly this was the initial set of guidance, and there are some major categories not covered here that we're all going to be anxiously awaiting. And then some really robust references. So I just want to stress on this slide, the priority here is to return this, safely return all students to in-person school settings. I have to say, this was highly stressed to us in the last week. And frankly, a little surprising that we were able to be so confident that this needed to be the goal. But that is where we are at, and I think that's pretty exciting to me because we all know the social, emotional challenges we have bred by having kids home in isolation equates to some of the educational and health challenges and risks that are also trying to be met. So what I think, I felt really comfortable about it, perfectly aligned with the Health and Safety Working Group, where we've got, you know, five to six local members of the medical and scientific community. And at our first meeting a few weeks ago, the very first thing those medical folks said was the kids need to get back to school. The social is just as important as the medical as far as the kids are concerned. So the state's in agreement with that, is I think my takeaway. And I can explain how they got there because for us, it was a question of, well, how would we do that with some of the parameters we expected to be here? And there's been some modification to that, which is definitely going to take some conversation with everyone involved. And we're asking the state to help with that, given that it's originating from them. And then they've outlined three possible learning models. None of, the other two won't surprise you at all. And then we'll talk on what they're planning next. Let me see here, am I slapping? So this, these are the philosophies and approaches, just quickly. And I think this, in many ways, is not a surprise to us. Safe return in person based on medical literature and review, balancing health and safety with health, safety, socioeconomic, and achievement risks of kids being home. And a real belief that it's not one strategy that keeps us all well, but it's a combination of approaches that all have to act together to mitigate the risks and keep not only our kids safe, but all of the adults that are in the schools as well. They really have strongly referenced research that. that is obviously brand new, but some data's starting to come out of experiences. I'm not gonna go through all of this, but you can see a lot of what DESI is outlining is just the lower risk factors for kids. And that's held. We all have heard some of the cases of the immune deficiencies, you know, Kawasaki, like in very, very rare cases. And again, this was supported by our own local health and safety team when we spoke, and a number of them are pediatricians, that yes, the media is right to cover it because when it happens, it is significant and very serious for those kids. But it is very few kids that have had this exposure. In most cases, kids in schools where they've been open have not been high transmission settings for the kids or the adults. So again, asterisk as of June 30th, that's what the data is showing. But DESI and the medical experts have really grown to see this as an opportunity then for schools. I'm gonna just highlight these because I have slides that get into more depth because I think this is, these are details people have been waiting for. We are gonna be requiring masks for kids ages second grade and up. Strongly recommended for kids in below that. And I'll talk more on that in a minute. Physical distancing, and this is one that I will outline and offer a little more thought on in a minute because I think the game changer here and why we can consider bringing all kids back is that the recommendation is a three to six-foot physical distancing rather than six as a solid, non-flexible number. And that's absolutely the difference between whether you can bring, even try to bring all kids back or if you've gotta split them into a hybrid model. So I'll talk more on that in a minute. Hand washing clearly is part of the routines. And then building protocols that everyone who is sick stays home. So just in terms of masks and what the recommend, really, the, not the recommendations, but the mandates are at the moment. Sorry about that. All students in grades two and above will be required to wear them at all times with, just in parentheses, lunch. You know, if you're eating, you can't have a mask on. And words we're using that need more definition from the state is a mask break, especially for the younger kids. And I think they're gonna give us more direction on exactly what that looks like. But a given point in the day where the kids are settled and not moving and at a distance that's safe, where they can take a break and have the mask off. Students, grades one and below are strongly encouraged. And I think we're all gonna wanna talk a little bit more on what that expectation is for us, if it's strongly encouraged versus a must. Clearly, if you'll read the last bullet on the bus, which we don't have transportation guidelines yet. So this is the only real reference to transportation to this point that any student on a bus will have to have a mask on. And the adults are all clearly required to wear masks and face coverings. We've been talking a bit as the initial response to this has happened of what the options are there. The staff has already expressed some wish for the ability for kids to see their faces. It's a big, any of you, as you wear masks, probably become acutely aware of how much nonverbal we all do. Smiles being the basic that we're thinking of. So we're actually taking a look at transparent masks and costs and what the options are for that. We did ask the health, local health director about shields instead of masks. She was quite adamant, as was the governor, the commissioner today, that that's just not the same protection and doesn't prohibit the transmission of the respiratory droplets. So it is about masks. There will be a list of accommodations for kids who that isn't a good fit for because of different needs that they have. We've already got high-level versions of that so that there's, you know, some relaxing of that where individually appropriate. And that'll be a student-by-student discussion and one that we will work closely with the state direction and building, building level people on. Oh, go ahead. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I'd like to interrupt just.
Sure.
So that was one thing I did read and it confused me. The buses, I mean, one would assume then that a minimum of three feet apart in the buses, right? Even with the masks?
That's, that's what you'd assume based on what we know so far. We don't have any direction right now on the buses.
So even though they're not, and you're about to get into it, I guess, they're not specifically gonna restrict the number of people in a classroom.
No.
The bus is gonna drive a lot of this, right?
It could. It definitely could. Yes. That's why we're all anxious for that set of guidelines because you're right, if you can't get them to school, that's a.
Making sure they're missing.
Yeah.
I'll jump in too, from the operations working group that's been a part of the task force. One of the discussions there, although we haven't gotten into the details of transportation yet, one of our initial discussions was whether the communities would decide, okay, in order to make this possible, we, the parents, will pitch in and, you know, drive our kids where possible. And so there's discussion of a survey, or the survey already went out, you know.
Yep.
Went out. But discussion of really figuring out, would there be a certain population of parents who would commit to just not using the bus for?
You know what? I'm telling you, Heather, after six months of this, I will carry my kids on my back if it gets them to the classroom.
Yeah.
So there you go. We think there'll be some willingness for some people to pitch in and drive their kids.
I think you're right, but I'm just curious, it's sort of a gap in their sort of logic train.
Yeah. All the talk we've done about trying to encourage people to take the bus and not drive to school, right?
Yeah.
We might have to encourage the opposite for a little while.
Right.
Yeah. And then trickle down from there, obviously.
It may be more than a parent ask. It may be a parent insist. So we may have to re-figure arrival times and so on, but we'll get to all of that. One thing that's not mentioned in the DESI stuff you've shown us so far, Lori, is the time factor.
Yeah.
Time of exposure, length of exposure is critical. So there must be some unspoken assumption here that they're talking about seven hours.
Yes, we're talking about a full school day. Correct.
Okay. And we don't see anything about what kind of mask either.
No, we don't. No.
And that'll be something that we can anticipate by way of questions.
Sure. The only piece I'll offer is the, you know, they've said kids should provide the, you know, most districts, all of us tackling the cost of ongoing provision of masks. The ask would be for parents to help support that if they're able to. So no, we don't have any of that specifically. Clearly, we're not talking about like the N95 medical masks. We're talking about just the more basic mask. And I think they are, I know I heard somewhere, I haven't seen it in print, just, you know, cloth masks are fine if people wanna purchase or sew those and wash them and things like that.
And that parent supply is not a local request, that's a DESI.
Yes, yes, yes. Just in terms of classroom, and he actually had visuals he showed us today to just give us more on this. So the goal here is three to six feet apart. And probably, aside from that, really, really impactful is the recommendation to have them all face the same direction. We're going back to rows, everybody. And, you know, we got a lot to talk about in pedagogy there because we have really worked to move away from that. That's not how we teach anymore. So that's got some of the educators really, you know, spinning on, oh, no, what does that look like? However, we're all just glad if this is how we can get kids back in the building, we will figure that part out. And, you know, certainly not give up the positive changes we've made while we try to also certainly meet the mandates for safety. So, so yes, it goes back to your old, old feel of rows in classrooms, three feet apart. We did some, and I don't have the answers to all of this, obviously. It's only been a couple of days. I did walk all of the schools last Thursday. You know, having had a sense we might get to three feet based on a comment or two we had heard a couple of days earlier. And, you know, the elementary schools, I don't see as particularly, we're very fortunate that we have, you know, small class sizes and good-sized rooms. And the ability to spread them out felt doable. Some pieces to figure out for sure. The middle and high schools are gonna take some discussion. You can see the next slide, next bullet is about, you know, use any space you have, cafeteria, libraries, auditorium, you know, really let go, let go of the way you were doing things before and really work toward the goal of all kids getting in the building. Or even if you, I have heard this and talked to a couple of other superintendents, even if you've gotta go find space somewhere else, the goal is to try to get them all back into some regular educational routine, whether it's under our roof or somewhere else. I don't expect we're gonna have to get quite that creative. We've talked about tents outside, like all these ideas are churning now that we know what we're aiming for. So. And then just references here, the cohorting. Clearly, we all know that the smaller amount of kids they're exposed to, it's beneficial. The elementary schools, that's fairly.
Yep.
Much easier, very challenging at the secondary level. It has not, we wondered if this was gonna happen. It's not a mandate to reconfigure all of the high school and have kids stay put and teachers travel in, which as you get up into the upperclassmen, it's almost impossible with singleton courses and, you know, teachers needing to be credentialed. Then how would you move kids in a way that allows them the richness of their schedule? So that we have a lot to talk about. If there's any option to do any of that, even for lunch or something like that. None of that's been discussed yet, but will be tackled as next week starts to get us back into normal schedules with everybody back at work. And probably the other, you know, the big impact here of the capacity requirement not being quantitative. You know, they do not cap the size of the groups in a classroom, which the earlier sped guidance made us wonder if that was coming. So that gives us the ability to, if we can get them three feet apart, how many kids can you fit in the room? And then certainly some judgment calls on what feels safe, you know, even if the room's big, how, where do you slow that down if need be? So a lot of new information here, just in terms of where the support for this is coming from, because that is already coming up because it's brand new. The three feet's not something we've heard very much. The American Pediatric Association put out a document very similar today. I've only read a little bit of it, but very similar. Loud and clear front of that document is the goal is to get kids back. And the, the small amount of increased risk from three to six feet is far offset by the social emotional well-being and academic well-being of kids being physically present. So it's become a holistic approach, which is really, I think, adding to our ability as to what we can consider. The other reference for the three feet is coming out of the World Health Organization, which is a one-meter recommendation for distance because that's the clinical, and I heard the mass general experts say this this morning, that is the clinical distance of the respiratory droplets if someone were to sneeze or cough or something like that. The six feet is, got added benefit to it just because it, you know, puts you that much farther out. But the three feet is the clinical number they've, they've come to be comfortable with. So lots to talk on this. There's a lot of information to share and get out to people. I've literally shared only the raw document so far since last Thursday and decided this was a good place to open the discussion up bigger. And then the task forces would take it from there and to the parent community and teaching community as well. So. Other things they've mentioned here?
Lori?
Yeah.
Quick question. Any, any conversations about CDC? And CDC following on with World Health or American Pediatrics?
I haven't, certainly there's been acknowledgement that CDC has been at a six-foot guideline until now. I haven't heard anyone say that they are predicting they're gonna go to the three feet. I think it'll be interesting to see if that happens, for sure.
Be interesting if they don't sync up.
Yes, clearly, clearly, I guess. Yep. Screening and handwashing, we are not going to be screening for temperatures or anything like that as kids come in. There will be an expectation on families to support a symptom check and not sending children to school. I think we have a lot to talk about in terms of whether there's any reporting to that or is it just a guideline and a checklist at home? For employees, we are mandated for a reporting process, which is why I mentioned a Google forum before. I'm not clear if, it has not been said that that's a mandate for families to report beyond an expectation that we will share the list and ask them to follow it. So I heard the doctors this morning talk on the, why the temperature checks aren't there. It's just simply a matter of the science that some people who are positive for the virus don't have temperatures. There's so many other reasons you could have a temperature. It was just proving not to be a, an absolute. So they have not recommended it in the school protocols. And then obviously, the, I think this, this part we all expected, the handwashing. And they've started to outline the expectations minimally for when that would happen, upon arrival, before eating, anytime you're handling the mask, before dismissal, and then access to hand sanitizer and especially in the common locations throughout the buildings.
So Lori, just regarding handwashing, is that, I mean, even if you had half the kids at CC, that would be, that'd be impossible.
Indeed, indeed. So we have a lot to talk about there. Yeah.
It seems like they were sort of like, or hand sanitizers. So it wasn't really clear to me.
I don't think it is totally clear yet until we all get into the process of really planning it and seeing what's gonna work where. Elementary, I'm much more comfortable to say they can hand wash. A high school, is it more providing hand sanitizers and really making sure kids get the time and direction to go do that on a regular basis? What was interesting, part of the Board of Ed meeting this morning included a vote to relax the required time on learning requirements, the 990 hours at the high school and the 900 for K8. And they did vote to give the commissioner authority to determine if, because our time is now gonna be spent on some of these practices, that we wouldn't all be scrambling to keep up with those other requirements at the same time. That clearly part of the day is, is gonna go to sanitation and cleanliness. So.
Is it elsewhere in the guidance? I haven't really seen much about if your, your family member feel like you were exposed in, on the, on the train, at your workplace, your, you know, your childhood in another school. How is that supposed to be handled?
So we do not have direction on that yet. That is in coming documents. We asked that this morning and it's coming. So we don't have that yet. What we're hoping for is a very clear protocol that helps us know how to respond. And, you know, what, what's the scope of quarantine when things happen? Where's the trigger for school closures? Like, we want a lot of direction on all of that. Because as cases come up, if, if and when cases come up, that will, I just know, you know. And I'll only reference back just in, you know, February, when people were exposed via travel or whatever, just what a challenging process that was. And then talking to my colleagues where there were identified cases and direction wasn't consistent among Board of Health, you know, health directors or, and all of that. So I think the more common that is, the better.
And some colleges are, for example, requiring that the students and staff self-quarantine for 14 days before they return to campus.
Correct, correct. It did come up today and they don't have an answer for us yet on, you know, testing of staff and whether that will be ever part of the discussion. Because I know for some of the colleges, that's, yeah, they need to go to. Yeah. So we're shifting gears a bit now out of the health and safety requirements to the outline of options that DESI's labeling. Again, I, none of these are dramatically different than what we expected. The, the difference is that because the three feet and the no cap in classrooms, there's an ability to consider everyone in person, which I frankly wasn't sure we would have that option this early. So you can see on the one side in green, returning without restrictions is really the fourth option that we all know isn't a viable one right now. So we don't, we're not planning for that. So we don't, we're not planning for that. The first option of everyone going back as many kids as possible, which hopefully is all of them with all these safety pieces in place. The middle being your hybrid, which will be local decisions on the schedules that go along with that. And I think that's going to be a goal sooner than later to start to identify what our plan is there. I know that's a major planning piece for families and staff to understand if we need it, what the hybrid model is going to look like. And then, you know, the third option is should we need to be closed, what our remote learning plan will look like. And clearly that engages, both of those are about teaching and learning, not just learning. We are planning full, full-on instruction throughout all of these environments, obviously in different ways, but with the goal of staying as on track to the curriculum and content as possible, no matter what the scenario is. So I think, think what we're now really prioritizing is this full, full return while we make really robust plans for the other two options. Because the truth is, and I think this is going to be the hardest part for us all to get okay with, the truth is, we're not going to know until August based on the health data. We're all naming concerns of what's going on in the southern and other parts of the country and what does that happen to, you know, in a state like Massachusetts, which has been very effective in slowing contagion rates down. So I, nobody has all those answers yet. So the part that is going to be really challenging is the unknown up till very close to us opening. And hopefully just by the work we're going to do during the month of July, we start to at least put details to that so people can use it for planning purposes. So any questions on any of the models they've outlined?
Lori, can I comment? I'm confident that this is part of the discussions already, but I feel like I have to say it in looking at this, that these three scenarios, as much as we would like them to be, are not necessarily standalone independent scenarios. And I think we all have to be prepared for the, for the fact that they could meld and that they will meld. And if we're looking at, for instance, all in person, there are going to be families who are not comfortable sending their kids to school and it will have nothing to do with the preparation that we've done and how thorough it is, that they have somebody high-risk at home, but that they will have valid reasons that they just are not comfortable sending students to school in person. And the same goes through, holds true for teachers and staff. I mean, and I say that it's almost a separate question, but we're talking about how kids are less vulnerable and less likely to pass it on. But there are a lot of adults in our schools and so we have to think about them too. And again, that's another question and I know it's being addressed. But, but my real point here is I want to make sure and really it's maybe me wanting to understand how we're going to be planning for a hybrid of even these options that are in front of us in some ways. And, you know, the differentiation between, for instance, an actual absence and a student not physically being in school, because maybe they're really sick and are absent and, and aren't engaging at all. Or maybe they just can't be in school, but they need to be considered attending school that day and completely engaging. So those are all just things that, again, I know that they're on your radar, but I have to say them out loud.
They are on the radar and they're clearly on the state's radar as well. And, you know, we don't have definitive answers to any of those things. I think what we're hearing and what's starting to evolve is that you would have, clearly, we're going to provide learning and teaching to kids who are home because of family situations or their own medical situations. What that looks like exactly is, I think, highly dependent on the number of kids that entails.
Right.
To really create a, so is it a remote, separate learning environment for those kids? I tend to think not, just based on the quick scan I did of the survey that closed Friday, which I'll get to all of you. I actually think it's more trying to make sure they're connected into the in-person learning, which is very different than setting up a separate system for them under remote learning.
And I think would be important, I agree. I think that's, in terms of the holisticals that we're talking about and social emotional wellness, if a child has to be learning from home, I think they'd be much better off at least engaging with the classroom that's going on.
Right.
Person versus in their own separate environment.
Yeah, and so similar conversations with the staff on, you know, what those options will be for them and being supportive of their needs, certainly the medical needs, being sure that we're giving them options and then we're going to have to really clarify what that all looks like. Because to your point, all the normal attendance processes for staff or students get all murky here. So I know the commissioner's talking about, you know, attendance is a mandated part of our accountability formula. I know he's already looking at that needing to be changed because the other part that came up isn't just people who are excluded for those reasons, but as quarantine things happen to people, then we also have to be nimble when those, you know, 14-day things happen and accommodate those situations. So one other thing that's come up at the state level and among my colleagues is looking at, as a backup and having an option that perhaps we use as an on and as-needed basis. There are very quality remote learning platforms out there that do content and have some ability to provide curriculum and feedback to kids. It's become a, it's become a discussion at the state level for sure as to whether that would be a resource for districts to have one of those, you know, programs that gets vetted, is determined to be of quality and then could be an option, at least even in short-term modes where kids would not lose ground because they've got access that's already structured and built. So I think the scope of options is starting to really expand, which is really exciting, because I think that's going to make this more doable, because there's going to be so many variations on the situations, as you really described.
I think that's the key word, variations. I think Heather has it right. I'll say it more critically. I think this remains too simplistic. I think it confirms what we knew six weeks ago. I'd love to see number two be hybrid teaching and learning. And I'm not ready to discuss AI or packaged programs, but I do think we need to look at number two as the option. For example, number one is returning to an old normal with new safety protocols. But it begs the question, at what point is number two a necessity? Right now, on a high-absence Friday, we might lose 10% of students and teachers. It's a regrettable reality. We're going to have to, I think, discuss what threshold we hit where number one is just not viable. So to your point, I think we have to quickly look at some of the tools. Where I teach, I'm told I'm going to teach whether I'm in the classroom or not and my teacher and my students are going to come, whether they're in the classroom or not. Meaning it's a very robust number two with as much number one as we can have. And failing that, it's a number three. But you, but number two seems to be some version of number two, the variety word you used, is, I think, our default. In spite of the, the urgency to get everybody back, we're going to have people who aren't coming back for one reason or another.
No question, there will be, be people in the number two category. I think we're expecting there's going to be some state thresholds for how and when you flip on a broader scale. So I don't know, more to come, I think, in the coming weeks.
Let me just comment on Court's thing. I think, first of all, I would focus on the word continuum. Even though they wrote boxes with numbers, the word continuum is the most important thing, right? So, you know, there's going to be some combo, as somebody said, there's, as Heather said, there's infinite, you know, combinations in that. I was encouraged in the report that the bias is to get kids back into the school. So I think just starting with the lens, as we like to say in the committee, right? The lens of prioritizing in-person is, I think, encouraging and helpful. So, you know, if you start from that perspective and then you rule, okay, there's people who, for whatever reason, don't want to send their child to school on a given day or on all the days, and how do we manage that? And the, you know, physical restrictions, I'm sure your committees are looking at, Lori, the physical restraints of, you know, how many kids can be in this room and how many kids in that room and blah, blah, blah. So, you know, those things will drive some of the pieces of the continuum. And of course, in order to have a continuum, number three has to be in place. I mean, you can't have anything other than number one unless you have number three. So once you have number three, now it's just math, you know? It's how many kids are in the three box and how many are in the one box? So I wouldn't, I was actually encouraged by it. And I think it may be that more students are reluctant to come in the beginning, but, you know, if it's observed that we're, we are being safe and taking those precautions and it's working out, I think it'll find an equilibrium. I actually feel like it's a step forward.
Yep. The doctor this morning from MGH did a nice job of describing how their anxiety was, you know, sky-high as professionals, you know, three months ago. And they've learned that the protocols that are in place are keeping them safe and they feel much more comfortable now. And she really, I think to David's point, you know, said, that's what's going to happen. You're going to start really high and then as, as everyone feels like it's working and it's safe, then, then it gets a little easier, so. I think the last piece of, we owe them a plan, plans in, I expect around the first of August, which fits our goal of plans by July 31st. So that didn't rattle me too much. We have a lot to do in the next four weeks for sure, but we were geared up to do that and all the structures are in place. So that's, that's good news. And then upcoming things that they have not fully outlined yet, there's calendar options potentially. They've referenced some ideas of calendar changes that I'm not even going to say out loud till we hear more and if that's something they really want us to consider, because the calendar is a local-based discussion, although Rhode Island made a statewide calendar, which intrigued us. Prerequisites, you know, how do we know if we're going to open in person? What are the conditions that have to be in place in August? Remote learning resources, I referenced that a little bit. Process for handling the cases, which you've just asked and clearly we need that. Special programs and populations, we know we need more guidance on special education, ELL. Some of those, some of those will be impacted depending on the setting. Facilities and operations, those I expect will be stricter. Protocols on cleaning and lunch and pieces haven't come up anywhere else. Transportation, obviously. And then, of course, athletics, extracurriculars and electives. And where will we be on that? Which is getting, being, especially the athletics is in conjunction with MIAA, who also has advisory boards going and task forces. So, so it feels like, you know, I, I think we all have gotten comfortable that some directions started to come and it isn't too far off of what we were all working on. But it, I like David's word, the bias is very clear in, I think, a way we, we needed, that we're still, we're aiming for in-person, knowing Court's points are all very valid, that we're not going to have 100% in-person, because that's not realistic. But there's a lot here to work with, so that's, that's good news.
I have a question in terms of feedback back to the state. How, how long is that window of opportunity for superintendents to have the communication back and forth in terms of planning for the, for the opening?
I feel like it's evolved into a perpetual opportunity for feedback and ongoing conversation, not only through the Superintendents Association, but through now what's been weekly calls. And the commissioner's actually been very personable to give us direct access to him directly if we decide we need it. So I actually feel like Evette's become really a wide-open. That doesn't mean I can call and get things to change necessarily, but I could definitely offer challenges or an obstacle that we hit based on that or something that we're really, you know, pressed on and want to be sure is getting talked about. We've done that a few times. I know I've done that through the Superintendents Association, like, when are they going to give us guidance on this topic? Because we, we need help with this. And then I've seen it show up later. So it's been a really responsive, responsive setup and it's only gotten more responsive in the last month.
And also in terms of funds, that there will be available to schools to pay for some of those changes. Is it going to work sort of in a way that it worked with the federal money that first comes first served? Or they will make sure that everybody gets covered here? It didn't look like it's a lot of money set aside yet.
So we, and I was going to do some of this in the budget pieces, but there's no reason to hold it all off. It's still a lot of moving targets, for sure. So they're hopeful for more from the federal government that has not yet been named. The state has allocated up to $225 per student. We don't have more details on whether there's a formula attached to that or if it's a true per student regardless of what district you're in. So that, we need more, that was just, that just came out Thursday. And then just in terms of the typical budget process, which I'll save till the other, there's still this just plethora of unknowns. What I do hear, Eva, which I think we're grateful for, we very hear, very much hear an advocacy from the leadership at the state level in DESI, realizing that all of this is contingent on funds. And there's, there's a lot of work going on with the governor's office and with the legislators to try to really help them understand all these moving pieces of which, some of which are the additional costs, but also how do we just maintain basic services? So there's a lot of good intent going on there right now. I don't think any of us are quite sure how it's going to land. But more to come, I think. And the challenge, I don't see the challenge going away, that we're going to have to create budgets without all that information. But, so, good, good question.
Any other questions?
I just have budget questions, I'm going to hold them until.
We'll move to that.
Sure, so I'm, I'll be Jared for tonight and give you where we're at. Some high-level things, and then I'll just talk on the local work we've been doing. Today, actually, at about four o'clock, I got notice from the state that the regional 112th budget is approved. So we are all set to start July 1st with the allocation of the monthly amount. So we're good to go there. I mentioned the 225 per students, are awaiting more information about that. Just a reminder that we heard today, state receipts are due July 15th. So that is a big driver to the state budgets getting made. So in our anxiety and eagerness for that information, I think it struck me pretty loud and clear, and it was stated very clearly, how can they make a budget if they don't know what receipts they have until the middle of the month? So one's going to have to follow the other. We did hear from Concord's Finance Director late last week that as of the 25th of June, property taxes have come in at 99% of expected receipts and personal taxes at 97%. Both of those numbers are slightly higher than a year ago. So that's encouraging, positive news. What we don't have yet are the, you know, local meal and hotel tax receipts, which we know will be down, so.
And Lori, just my feedback is that the, regarding property taxes, the lenders are covering people for. You're not going to see that drop off for a, you know, in the last downturn, it was the following year when foreclosures really started to happen. So it's sort of good news, but the local receipts is really, I think, what concerns me the most. I kind of am surprised that we haven't had that information yet.
Yeah, I haven't heard any updates yet.
I don't think we even have May versus.
Yeah, so, yeah, hopefully soon we'll get more of that. We did have Carlisle Town Meeting on the 20th, so they've approved a level funded amount as essentially a way to get to the town meeting when the information is more readily known. Concord Town Meeting is.
Before you, I just want to.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Just to my friends in Concord, the Carlisle Town Meeting lasted approximately 45 minutes.
Yeah, it was quite something and it was a good thing, it was hot.
There's a marker for you guys.
You're just bragging already, David.
We think we're going to get it done today and I take the over on that.
I don't know, as I left, I thought, you know, there's something to the efficiency of a meeting in the 90-degree humidity with a mask on. It makes you move right along.
You were really, it was very nice of you to come. I was surprised. Jim asked me the day before and I'm like, don't come, Jim. There's no point, you know, just, we're going to deal with it. It'll be fine. And then you said you were there. So I felt bad that you had to.
No, no, not at all. Actually, I just, I think we should give a shout out. So, you know, Victor did a great job on behalf of Carlisle Finance Committee. He's why there were no questions because he did such a nice job outlining where they were. Yeah. Um, and then just Concord Town Meeting looks like it's going to happen on September 12th. We've been working with them on space with a rain date on the 13th, probably on the Doug White field because.
I think it was determined yesterday that, uh, it would be the 13th.
Okay.
I could, this is Mike Lawson. If I could chime in, yes, it's, uh, we ran into a potential conflict with our Jewish community, which is a
Okay.
holiday on the 12th. And so it's been moved to the 13th that, uh, I believe it's one o'clock with the rain date on Monday at 5:30. And we'll be discussing this in more detail at the select board meeting on Monday.
Okay, that's helpful. I'll, I'll vet those dates at the high school too. Um, thank you, Mike.
Sorry, Mike, you just said Sunday at one o'clock?
Uh, yes, I believe that's, I believe that's correct. I don't have my notes in front of me, but I'm pretty sure it was Sunday at one o'clock because she, the moderator wants to keep it after the church services that are usually in the morning on Sunday.
Okay, great. We'll look for more information to come. Um, and then just the work we've been doing on the budgets as we go through the process again. And Jared and I spent most, pretty much all of last week going through, he had met with the administrators the week before. Now I'm queued up so that as the administrators come back from vacation next week, we have to do another round with them because I have a lot of questions and things I want to look at with them. And I think we're on track for the 15th, the way we had expected to be. Um, I think as we get through the end of next week, as those conversations have happened, we might be ready to report out at least high level things we're looking at. I'm sure Jared will tell me he won't have numbers quite ready, but we'll, we're getting direction. So. More to come, but we, I have to say, everyone's done a really great job of looking through a new set of lenses in terms of what do they really need now with all the things that are moving here? And what can we hold off on or wait or you know, potentially even revisit down the road as we build 22, which obviously is going to come right at us here as we get into the fall. So.
So Lori, are you looking at a, a number across the board cut? What are you looking?
We're totally, we're really zero basing. So I directed everyone to put in what they thought they needed, given all the things that had changed and we're going to see where we land. And bring that to you.
Sure.
I didn't target a number yet.
And what if, uh, you know, the numbers do come in from Concord and it looks like we do need a five to seven percent cutter? I'm just throwing numbers out. It could be three. I don't know. It could be nothing.
So that's in the back of our heads through all of this. We're taking a pretty conservative approach to what we're building into these budgets. So that it will not turn into this budget that, you know, we create a situation where we're trying to come at it, you know, we've created a 5% increase over what we asked for in December. I mean, that's not a viable way to operate in this. So we're being pretty, pretty tight about what we're proposing.
Conservatively prepaid and preserved.
Yep. And some of that's in place now too.
In the region, I can't, you know, K through eight is a different thing. Maybe Cynthia's questions are more about K through eight, but region is very, you know, Jared and Lori have done very well in
Yep.
preserving, uh, lifelines. So. I wouldn't worry about region.
Yeah.
K through eight might be different.
No, thanks, David. You're right about that, I think. And I think at the CPS level, we've, we're going to close FY20 with Circuit Breaker back, you know, funded and some stability there. A lot of our discussion when we bring it to you is going to be risk and where do, you know, what, what risks do you want to take to try, to come to certain totals? Because we are coming in conservative in terms of materials and supplies and things like that, trying to relook at how we might do some other things, substitutes is a discussion I want to have with the administrators next year because it just feels totally different now. And some of those moving pieces, but some of this is going to be a risk conversation and where do we take risk? How do we account for risk? Is, do we, do we, you know, having built budgets and really tough times and shaved so close that I almost went red? Do we still shave and say we're, we're comfortable with what we're asking for, but we know we didn't build in as much contingency? A lot of that's going to be our dialogue when we bring those to you.
So if, I just have one semi-related question and I meant this at the beginning. What was our determination, Article 26, the CPS capital?
We have not resolved that yet.
Okay.
But we need to. I, uh, I think we need to loop and maybe talk with Stephen Crane and I have had a couple of passing conversations. I think we need a more formal conversation with the towns approach to capital. Because I think that might inform our thinking as to whether it's really all about the ERUs as far as I, I think in terms of whether we do a modified request, the whole thing, or if we trim it way back. So I think we should reach out to them and talk on what their thought is. I don't know. Mike, if you want to weigh in on any of the capital discussions, that is one thing we're still talking about.
No, I, um, I haven't heard anything definitively from the town other than I, I suspect they're going to try to go ahead with most capital projects, but I haven't heard definitively from this town manager yet.
Okay. So that leaves us in the same place they are then in terms of, we know what we might, we know what we were going to request and we just don't know if we're going to ask for the whole thing.
You have a few, this is a regional meeting, right?
Yes.
You, you have a few weeks still to sort that out.
Yeah. Yep. Yes, we do.
I just want to be sure that we didn't as a committee vote that that article is essential.
You didn't weigh in either way.
Right, but they have it on their, on their list as marked essential. So I just, I don't know who made that determination.
I think that, yeah, yeah.
I just want to, I don't think we did.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we're in, in good shape with more to come. You know, I think it's July is going to bring you a lot of, a lot of work to study and dialogue with us about, and we'll take it from there.
Should we move on to the evaluation?
I think so.
Cynthia, who's going to, who's going to lead?
Maybe I'll start, maybe I'll start.
Okay.
We're going to start with the superintendent evaluation, uh, a little bit about the process. So this year, this year has been a little bit unusual that we have one less member not participating in the review. And we also had a major disruption and that has affected our evaluation process. That was the COVID-19. Where as the, um, this is where the committee decided early in the outbreak of pandemic not to evaluate our superintendent, superintendent on the work on her goals after the school closings. As the focus really needed to be on a response to that fast changing situation and not on the evaluation criteria and process. So therefore the period of March school closing to the end of the school year is not included in the summative evaluation. Now, however, many of our individual, um, school committee members gave superintendent raving feedback and reviews for her outstanding leadership during that time. And the comments to that period can be found in individual evaluation, the comments. Um, and all of those are individual evaluations are also are filed and are accessible to the public. So you can find that there. School committee individual, so now the process itself. The school committee, uh, individual members worked and filled out the superintendent evaluation. Next, we came together as a group and we put together summative evaluation that we will share today with you and the public. This year it was Cynthia Rainey and I. I just wanted to extend a very big thank you to Heather Baud for giving us a hand in this process. And then moving on to evaluation, I don't know if anyone can put that on the screen for since Erin is not there. So maybe, I don't know if everyone has the evaluation on the screen. Can we share it?
I might be able to pull that up and put it on the screen.
Yes, please do that.
Came from you, right?
It came from Cynthia.
Eva, well, while he's doing that, can you restate, uh, what, what do we, what do we release to the public?
So to the public, we released the summative, uh, evaluation.
Thank you.
And I, yes.
I can share it if.
Yeah, okay. I was going to say the same.
Somebody's that's better. Okay.
See ya.
Yep. It's great.
Yes, we can go.
Thank you.
Start at the top, um.
Yeah.
I'll just, you tell me when to click.
To the end of cycle summative evaluation report. So. Overall, uh, when we're talking about superintendent evaluation, proficient grade is what any district superintendent is striving through. It's a very high achievement, um, for any superintendent. And Dr. Hunter continues to be a very high achiever. Um, she has, she has, uh, a split vote between three members. Three members, um, uh, set, uh, voted her as excellent, which is amazing. And, uh, three members voted as proficient, which is what, what the goal is for the year. So. This is an excellent review for our superintendent. And, uh, it can be seen really in, um, the work, the.
Sorry, David, just so you know, you're screen sharing and you're now showing us your email, not.
Oh, I am? Oh, I'm sorry.
We're going to need a moment. There we go.
Okay, sorry about that. All right. Back, we're okay?
Yes, thank you. This is definitely the hardest working superintendent and, um, and you, we can see how many initiative communications, new programs, how much work has been going in into, um, keeping an eye and focus on this, on the students, students' well beings and balancing, balancing the budget and being fiscally responsible. And, and careful in a, in the budgeting process. So just wanted to read the overall comments. Um, so. "In the face of challenges of 2019, 2020 school year, Dr. Laurie Hunter has proven herself to be truly exceptional leader, not only for our schools, but for our entire community. Dr. Hunter's leadership brings many concepts that spring to mind: integrity, dedication, student focus, inclusion, collaboration, courage, pre-partners, high standard, transparency, composure, humility and empowerment. Dr. Hunter's excellent work towards this year's goals and objective was interrupted by COVID-19 disruption when the focus rapidly shifted to online teaching and learning, student engagement and well-being. Although many members commend on Dr. Hunter's strong leadership during this time, the committee decided early in the pandemic not to evaluate the superintendent's performance during that time due to lack of established metrics. So the evaluation focuses on the timeframe from September through mid-March. The district continues to improve in many areas under her leadership. And this is a little bit about the work that, um, has been completed or is in process. Dr. Hunter facilitated the creation of an education vision and design recommendations leading to significant progress on feasibility study for the new CMS building. She has made significant contribution to the Concord Middle School Building Project. But as the project is on pause for the current time, it is difficult to properly assess the process, the progress. The cultural competency initiatives have been produced, have produced results and will continue to make progress next year. She continues to build upon high level of trust and respect that she built, she has built with various constituencies, her leadership and direction regarding RTI screening and practices laid the groundwork for a consistent approach throughout both districts. Her investment in intensive special education program at many sites is a significant improvement to both districts and will lead to better outcomes. Even in an unexpected truncated, uh, truncated school year, Dr. Hunter accomplished a great deal, including enabling innovative learning developments through supporting out of the box thinking and the risk-taking, restructuring and improvement of special education services. Enhanced RTI screening and services, implementation of multiple wellness oriented programs, pointed and productive conversation about cultural proficiency initiatives to increase environmentally sustainable practices, creation of cost-effective zero-based budgets. Onboarding for several new members of the administrative team reports to the school committee on numerous educational topics, further development of collaborative relationship with community groups and ongoing management of unforeseen changes. Sorry. Dr. Dr. Hunter's work in engagement and communication, I apologize. Dr. Hunter's work in engagement and communication is exemplary. Uh, she's consistent in her response to all community stakeholders and values all of her interactions and uses them to inform her decisions. However, there is always room for improvements. Some members urge Dr. Hunter in her second superintendent cycle to change norms of teaching and learning to continue ensure the regional district is viewed as the leader in Commonwealth. Overall, however, Dr. Hunter is an outstanding leader for our schools and our entire community during this challenging year. And that has been really, um, displayed in, um, in comments coming from every single member. So. Moving on, moving on to the superintendent performance goals. So we have, we have used, um, to, to assess, um, student learning goals, district improvement goals and professional practice, practice goals. The, the work, there is a worksheet that, uh, the school committee have used and, uh, you can see how each of those goals have been, uh, described, uh, to help in grading and, uh, and in feedback. The overall student learning goals, there was a one that, um, there was one some progress. There was three met, two exceeded. So overall, um, she, she's, she's doing a tremendous, tremendous work. District improvement goals, one significant progress, two met and three exceeded. Professional practice goal, one significant progress, two met and three exceeded. Moving on to next to the comments and analysis of student goals, learning goals. And, um, this is based on, um, data collection, uh, the grading here is based on data collection, uh, interventions, um, service delivery models and special programs, uh, effectiveness and evaluations, um, of, um, evaluation systems to, um, allow for growth, innovation and classrooms, teaching and learning climates, um, where professional risk-taking is encouraged and student engagement is increased. So in this feedback, Dr., um, I will give this, um, a quick read. Dr. Hunter has taken high performing district and made it more efficient and effective for students. She has restructured the delivery of special education in a way that supports more students in the district, supporting high level goal of inclusion. And she had raised the bar on RTI screening and the leave delivery to improve supports to regular education students. Most importantly, she had shifted the mentality of teaching staff to pursue even more engaging delivery methods by empowering teachers to take risks and experiment. The explicit support in pursuing and testing are innovative ideas. My apologies, we have a very busy, busy house here. So. The explicit support in pursuing and testing innovative ideas has led to an environment of continuous improvement, which we will have long lasting effects. And, uh, then, uh, community members talk to the, uh, Dr. Hunter's taking, uh, data-driven approach to bring about higher achievements outcomes, while balancing the mental wellness of high school students in our high performing district. Students experience stress about Students experience stress about around both academic and extracurricular expectation to help student, the superintendent use the work done with challenge success to implement programs such as ninth-grade academy to plan and implement a different schedule and clear policies and communications to students around the testing, testing schedule. It made, made a real difference for not only academic needs of the students, but also for the well-being of the students, which is so important in that holistic approach that Dr. Hunter takes. In special education, she had also added additional programming, notably pathways for eighteen-to-twenty-one program to service more students on IEPs between the district. The superintendent, with her newly hired student services director, has done a lot of outreach work to engage parents of special education students and CPAC in constructive dialogue to address changes that meet the needs of the families and students. That's very notable, it doesn't happen in many districts. So, big, big kudos to, to Dr. Hunter. Although this work has, was cut short due to COVID-19 testing data from ninth grade, there's to look at growth and equity evaluation with metrics on how we are addressing disparities for students of color, special ads, special needs, or ELL will be available next year. Foundation in place for a further evaluation and around equity and achievement for different population is in place. So, that's for next year. And then despite the, these special education efforts, some members believe that more data and analysis will support committee participation towards special education goals. The superintendent is dedicated to student-centered approach. It's a very, very busy superintendent and very ambitious. Moving on to district improvement goals. A lot of work done here as well for district improvement. Just wanted to say. Three members said she exceeded, she exceeded, she gets exceeded grade to said met and one significant progress. We, we have to keep in mind that significant progress often means that the work was interrupted and will be continued next year, due, often due to COVID-19. Now, in district improvement goals, the superintendent and the district's focus this year was both on student wellness and cultural proficiency shone through clearly in her work. Dr. Hunter has holistic approach to students' achievement and supports social, emotional initiatives and programs to improve students' outcomes and overall high school experience. She looks for ways to bring service and supports outside of school and community for students and parents around well-being and mental health. She does a great job on community engagement and dialogue, employs many survey opportunities to get feedback, and engages CPAC to build a communication bridge with families of special education students. She has done a lot of commendable work around sustainability initiatives, and she's looking through a lens of sustainability where making major purchases are improvements at the school. She communicates and looks for input in building of budget and looks for savings where appropriate. The return of out-of-district students with a new offering, centralized supply ordering. The creation of ninth-grade academy concept at CCHS, her support for social-emotional initiatives, and her collaborative work on sustainability all brought about positive outcomes for the students. Her reiteration and strengthening of our cultural proficiency initiative laid the groundwork for being able to respond to challenges in race relationships, relations that we experienced both locally and nationally in the spring of this year. In response to a local issue, Dr. Hunter courageously named the racism that exists even here in our district, districts, and clearly stated a commitment to address it. Committee members were impressed with Dr. Hunter's exceptional ability to build relationships both between and outside of the schools. The degree of respect and trust that she has cultivated amongst staff, parents, and community members is extraordinary. All members through the thought she made a lot of progress in cultural proficiency, but some members saw opportunities for improvement specifically in regard, in regards to Q5 foreign trips discussions and the discussions around additional parking at CCHS. So this is my part. And I wanted to ask Heather and Cynthia if this is the time you want to open up for comments or do you want to continue? This would be the time that Cynthia would continue with the presentation.
Why don't you continue with the presentation? Cynthia is taking over the rest for now, right?
One more section, but this, this is mine.
Right, exactly, that's what I meant.
Yes.
Professional practice goals, I would say regarding the budget. The superintendent, along with Mr. Stanton, delivered a solid conservative budget. They're incredibly collaborative with both towns' finance committees, which in the end results in an agreed, usually an agreed to number, but we haven't quite made it through this process yet, believe it or not. So still work to do there. And I will turn it over, the next instructional leadership goal to Eva.
Yes, and instructional leadership, Dr. Hunter again did very well. Three proficient, which is the goal, two exemplary, one need improvement. Dr. Hunter works very hard to make sure that any decisions made have the student in focus, but academic achievement of all students is social, emotional well-being. She builds budget that is conservative and makes smart use of resources in many areas. It provides improvements to students' education. She advocates for innovative programs like newly launched special education and RTI programs and improved teacher evaluation protocols. This was all this year started. And then, at the same time, some committee members see an opportunity to increase the level of communication about efforts and outcomes for special education students and about the decision-making that might lead to the dissemination of new approaches or practices. In special education at high school, there is some concern from some members about warehousing element and then, and the need to ensure equitable access to education so all students can attain a goal of independent learning by the end of high school. Other members were satisfied with both communications and outcomes in special education.
And then regarding management and operations, there were three proficient and three exemplary. Dr. Hunter is very strong leader in terms of her management and operations skills. And I think we, we tend to forget about this, but leading two districts is, is a very complex thing. So I wanted to mention that here. The other, this is again, and then fiscal systems. I also wanted to, I think one of the big strides over the last couple of years has been going down to the one hundred and one thousand DESI codes in their budget presentations. And I think it is much clearer where the money is going. So I just wanted to mention that, and that's, I think is hats off to Mr. Stanton. I think the superintendent would agree.
And then. Oh, definitely, yes.
We have family and community engagement. This was a unanimous six exemplary. And I just want to read this because I think the committees are unanimous in agreement that Dr. Hunter achieves the exemplary rating for engagement due to her tireless efforts to mobilize stakeholders, frame conversations, and learn to inform decisions. She is an excellent communicator and a very welcoming, and very welcoming of all stakeholders in the educational process. She goes out of her way to ensure that the district is a valued and collaborative member of the communities it serves. She offers direct access to committee members early in, in any scenario that has the potential to devolve if left unchecked. She successfully cultivated trusting relationships with staff, parents, and the local communities. Her ability to authentically and consistently engage families and the community is one of Dr. Hunter's strengths and one of the greatest areas of value that she brings to our districts. So thank you. And finally, I think, yes, it is. So professional culture, you know, we've been talking about this tonight. And I think there's been a lot of work done regarding cultural proficiency. And I think Dr. Hunter is well aware that this is, you know, it's just something that is continuous work and improvement. So, you know, we look for, I think it's just been a very, you know, a really great groundwork. And I know we need just to do a lot more work and, but I thank you for laying the groundwork for us to move on this in the future. So I think we can now open it up to the rest of the committee who've been waiting patiently.
I don't have a lot to add. I think the last section that you read is the, the part that is very significant to me. And I would capture it in one word that was on a slide that Eva shared earlier. And that is the reference to relationships and the quality of the relationships that Lori, you have built and you have sustained. You, you don't do that in this district unless you have superior educational competencies and superior leadership competencies, and you have both in abundance. And I know it reduces a huge job to a single word, but it's a rather, a rather daunting task to have superior relationships with so many stakeholders that have different interests. And that's, that's the essence of leadership. How do we satisfy people with conflicting wants and needs and demands? So you've been put in the hot seat to try to balance those constituent needs, and, and you've pulled it off. So congratulations, but more importantly, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd love to jump in on Kurt's note of essence of leadership because I feel like that's the, the real theme here and the core message that needs to come out. And when we talked about doing this review or not in the whole process, is this, you know, as the COVID situation was exploding in March, we said, well, you know, we owe it to Dr. Hunter to validate everything that she's doing. And I, I'm gonna go pig picture. It's not before COVID or after COVID or, or either. It, it's the big picture that I feel that, especially in a time when many people feel an absence of leadership in many different ways, and partially just because we're, we're in a difficult situation. And that can be now, and it, and it could be difficult situations that we've faced throughout the whole year. I feel like Dr. Hunter has stepped up even more than I expected. And I've had high expectations all along this way. But to be a true leader, and I do agree with the words there, both for our school community and for our whole community. And I think the ability to instill confidence and trust in people in a time that's very uncertain is extremely difficult. And we can talk anything from teaching and learning to relationships to, you know, detailed planning on health and safety and operations. I feel like Dr. Hunter has really, really, not only proven herself, but just established herself long-term as the leader that we need and the person who can take us through difficult times and smooth ones and everything that we're going through. So I am extremely grateful that you're with us and very glad that later in our meeting, not too far later, we'll be ensuring that for more years to come. And I just can't tell you how much we appreciate you at the helm.
I can certainly echo everything that's been said. And I have, over the last three years, come to the point where I, I don't worry that the job is gonna get done. And, and I am always impressed with the grasp of the knowledge necessary to do the job. This is a big, a big undertaking, and every day it gets more complex. And we put you through your paces from this committee early in the year with some of the things we were working on. And, you know, you never took your eye off the ball. And, and then, you know, like Heather said, to expand this to the entire year. You, we were, we were very fortunate to have you in the superintendent's chair because it took a lot of, a lot of the kind of relationship building that you've done since you got here to navigate the challenges of the last three months. And, and to do it in a way that everybody is working this summer to make sure that, you know, all those things we just looked at from the guidelines from the state and the things that we're trying to do with the task force, you know, to ensure that we've got the best shot of getting kids back into the buildings come the fall. So it's been a great pleasure to work with you past three years, and this year included. Thanks.
I, I wanted to say that I, I met Dr. Hunter over the summer last year. So this is a, this, I, I've watched her through just one year. But I, from the beginning, I, I was so impressed with the amount of work, dedication. And I was always amazed, when does she sleep? Because she lives, she lives and thinks, breathes school and her students. She's an excellent administrator, excellent human being. Her humility, her listening skills really show in her relationships with the community. Anyone that I have ever spoken to, they, they've praised Dr. Hunter and her efforts to bring people together. I, I have a pleasure of sitting on one of the working groups. And she has created a platform that is very collaborative. And I'm very impressed with all the people and the expertise and the talent that comes from the community and the, and the sharing of ideas and deep conversations that are coming up to solve the, solve the problems of the, of the future fall opening, the deep thinking and that happens there. And I know that it happens because Dr. Lori, Dr. Hunter is truly looking for that input. She's open to, she seeks input from others. She uses it to, to drive her decisions. She's very collaborative. She has, we've seen a lot more progress in how our students in the region and families are informed when they are coming into high school. I have definitely seen progress. I have a ninth grader, so I've definitely seen a lot of progress done around wellness and well-being of our students when they are coming into the school. And all these wonderful changes with the ninth-grade academy, the pilot in the environmental sciences and sciences classes that my student has taken advantage. Some of that innovative thinking that came from Challenge Success, but that other private schools are using. They were not grading students for the first quarter, for the first semester. They were really focusing on those executive functioning skills, building students, organization skills, focusing how, how do you learn? And I've seen that same, the same innovative thinking that comes, that is used in private schools that comes from, you know, feedback that Challenge Success have received is actually implemented in, in, in the classroom. So. It's a, it's a wonderful thing to, to see that there is a translation of, of, of that communication pathway that happens, that, that information, that wealth of information that comes back, the feedback that comes back from students and families actually finds its way into the classroom and practical solutions that truly make a difference in, in our kids, kids' lives. And she has been responding tremendously during this, all of these challenges that our school and our students have been experiencing, the tragedies. I, I'm just in awe. So thank you so much, and I know that we are in good hands in the coming year.
Cynthia, do you want to go or should I go?
Sure. So it was a privilege to work on the summative review. I think that the, looking across all the, the work that gets done in the course of, we weren't even looking at the full year, is, is truly amazing. And of course, we all watch just. is truly amazing. And of course, we all watch just a lot more than that and observe that, you know, even the little things like the, you know, capital planning task force that met maybe eight times, that's still, you know, a two hour chunk out of your day, or an hour and a half, or whatever. So, and I would also like to mention the numerous collaborations with other community groups, like the League of Women Voters, who, you know, hosted a middle school forum amongst other things. So I, there's just, these little things really add up to a really strong impression of the schools in our community. So I thank you for that, because it's something that we were lacking, and I think it makes the whole town, towns of Concord and Carlisle stronger. So I really appreciate that.
Yeah, so I absolutely echo, I mean, I agree with all the comments. And I think Lori's work ethic and her energy is just amazing. And the amount of things that have to be dealt with, as was pointed out, it's two different districts, two different towns. And this is notwithstanding, you know, COVID, I think, is just how well she handles it is tremendous. And of course, COVID, I think absolutely the response was just phenomenal to that, you know, to that circumstance. And I want to say, I mean, Lori, and I've told her this, is really one of the most dedicated, ethically pure people I've ever met. I just have the highest respect for that. But I do also want to dovetail into a broader picture that I spent a lot of time thinking about. And I have these conversations in Carlisle as well with the school there, and I intend to have that conversation with the board of selectmen in Carlisle, and I'm part of it. Leadership is really important to me. And how we do leadership and how we continue to grow in leadership is really what I want to make a comment about. So, you know, we come from two towns that are just incredibly blessed. They're beautiful, they're physically beautiful, they're historically important, the cradle of the American Revolution. The state is a, you know, great melting pot of culture diversity and committed to education from, you know, the great universities and right through to the towns. And so we have all the gifts, we really do. And the people here are dedicated and they're affluent. And we, as a school board, represent those citizens, the parents, the community, and we are looked to leaders. And Lori is a leader, of course, in the school system, which itself is one of the most important pillars of the entire community. So because we have the means and the privilege, we also have the obligation. And if we don't strive to always drive improvement, we can't expect it of others. And my preamble goes to a conversation I had with Lori yesterday, where she expressed a little bit of concern about getting a grade of needs improvement on a particular item. And so I really have two responses to that. One is, you know, we do talk about the worry that our children have about too much grade focus. And if we're focused on grades at this level, then what do we, what message are we giving? So to me, the grade is unimportant. It's the lesson behind it. And so on the lesson, I think everybody needs improvement in something. There's nobody that doesn't, that can't be improved on. And an evaluation is both a backward look at what's been accomplished, but also an assessment of what lies ahead. And that's, you know, kind of where I want to take this. So when I look ahead, I still see gaps in special education, and I know it's a hard problem. But I live it as a special parent, Eva does as well. And I find some equity in learning issues that are, you know, troubling to me. I also see those on a milder scale in the discussion we had about foreign travel, and who gets to go, and why they get to go, and how money is raised. These are, you know, important things. And then finally, and I know that Dr. Hunter takes this extremely seriously, we have this low level kind of constant little hinging of hate speech. And, and, you know, okay, but we have to, you know, as a community, we have to kind of confront that, as we were talking. So it's hard for me not to say there's room for improvement. And when I say that, I mean, it's a reflection on everybody. The school committee needs to improve. The administration can improve. The communities need to improve. So I don't want it to be negative. I want to be positive, but I want us to, you know, my sort of partying words to the committee is, you know, Lori does an outstanding, Lori and her staff do just an outstanding job at all the operational stuff. And we spend way too much time, in my opinion, overseeing that. I don't think we need to. I mean, as we've all acknowledged, Jared is just amazing with the budget. And, you know, we have to monitor it, but I don't think we need to get to the level we get to. I believe the mission of the committee should be much more about very high level growth and change. And we're talking about change now in COVID, and that's spurring us to do some things. And then, you know, all the other things that I touched on. I think that really needs to be the focus of the leaders. And one recommendation I made, and I don't know if Lori will do it, but I believe if the directors of student services and the director of teaching and learning and the principals were available on a rotating basis in the meetings, you know, more frequently than they were this year, and that there's direct access to them about where they're going, you know, I think that would help the committee really get in touch with the pattern of growth that we're trying to drive. So, you know, in closing, I just want to say, we have a special region, special towns, but we are not yet at greatness. And I think we can be great. And I would like to see us stay on the course of bold vision, but uncompromising in our path to that. So I really appreciate Lori, everything you've done. And I know you came, you know, the region came from a tough place before you started, and you've really turned it around tremendously. And we had a somewhat of a corollary in Carlisle where we had, our present superintendent has turned around, you know, maybe less dire, but it's still an important situation. So I understand it. I wasn't part of it, but I certainly understand it, and I commend you, and I totally support the long-term contract we're about to approve. But I just, I want us to just, my hope is that we stay focused on, not just patting ourselves on the back and how great Lori is, because she is great, but, you know, we need to continue to grow, and we need to address those things where there are still, in my opinion, embedded biases that we are not even maybe conscious of. So that's my point. Thank you.
I just wanted to add something here, because I did say some progress on my superintendent performance goals in student learning. And I'm also a parent of special education students. But I'm looking at this this year, and I'm listening to some of the parents. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of anxiety to go, to go all around, for anyone to go all around, general education. But parents with special education students, they are really looking at that equity piece. And the work last year was cut short. We did not get into the school evaluation. There's some sort of test around equity where we look at, you know, how is that translating into serving students of all needs? I put some progress, because we, as a school committee, we have a responsibility to represent, represent the students' needs and really think progressively, think ahead. If we see things that will be coming up on our radar, especially next year, general education students, close those gaps quickly. Special education students, it takes a long time. There are some opportunities, you know, there will be solutions to a lot of, of the questions or the challenges that will be coming up. But if we lose sight of, you know, of the problems, or if we, if we are not asking for, to understand what happens and what happens with the data, what happens with the students, then you can't drive any solutions. We have, we have teachers retiring. We have opportunities to bring new programming and not pay, you know, and build skills for teachers and allow for sharing between teachers, bringing, bringing that into, in through that, through that door. So this coming year is going to be so much more important to be really cued into what's going on, how well we are doing. Are we, are we staying on top of the matrix, matrix as much as possible? And Dr. Hunter has such a difficult job trying to do all of it while making sure that the students are safe. So that was my, my input. Thank you.
Heather, you're
Thank you, sorry. If I can jump in quickly, I don't want to drag this out too long and keep going or make a debate, but I, I feel the need to clarify a couple of things here. One kind of specific and one more high level, just in regards to those comments. I don't want it to sound like the whole committee is all of a sudden saying that we have specific issues with special education. I think that's a couple of individual experiences. Obviously, you said you're special ed parents. I actually am also, and I had an opposite experience. I had an extremely positive and rewarding experience. So I think it just needs to be shared that there are two sides to that. And if we're looking at individual experiences, the opposite extreme is true. At a higher level, I just wanted to say that I personally think we need to be careful in distinguishing between challenges of the district that still need to be addressed and the leadership in addressing those. So to me, we are right now evaluating not whether or not there are still challenges in the district. Of course, there are. There are absolutely challenges that we, as a district and as a school committee and as administration, need to address. What we're evaluating right now is the superintendent's leadership in addressing those. And I think it's very important to distinguish, because I personally feel at least that even though there are challenges to still address, Dr. Hunter is leading us in addressing them very effectively. And so I feel like that is what we're talking about when we're, when we're addressing leadership, and that she is doing that very effectively, and that the challenges that you bring up, David, she has acknowledged, which is really an important part of that leadership, and is working on them. And I feel like we're making good progress. I just wanted to point that out.
But, you know, I want to say, I certainly didn't say she wasn't working on them. But a leader, the organization is reflected by the leader. So it's kind of a, to me, it's sort of a, when you start, I mean, this is, I had a very similar conversation with Jim O'Shea, who also recently concluded his first cycle, right? The first three years, especially given the background, totally on board of the way you said. But it's like, you know, it's like with a president or anybody. There's a point in time where you, as the leader, are the district. And, and so the issues that are the districts are your issues too. And I'm not saying Lori's not a great leader, and I'm not saying she's not aware of it, and I'm not saying she's not taking steps to address it. I'm just saying they exist, needs to be acknowledged, and she owns it. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I really don't. Maybe it's stylistic, but I, you know, I think that's the job of the leader. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
If there aren't more comments, can we just wrap this up with a reiteration of the fact that we are incredibly grateful for all that you do, Lori, and feel incredibly lucky that we're shortly going to vote another contract for you to keep us with you for a long time.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, of course, I have to just add, you know, this isn't any one person doing all of what you've been outlining and naming. And so much of my goals are to get really strong other leaders around me, which are very much in place now, and to empower everyone. So, you know, that's part of, it was, I'm validated, I think, that I heard you see that I can, you know, I've really worked to empower teachers and families and kids. And, boy, the kids giving them voice and the community at large, and it just makes us all richer for it. So that, that's, that meant a lot that you named that. But it makes me richer too, because I feed off of all of that, and it just builds the energy. And, you know, boy, in times of crisis, it matters greatly. So that isn't why I do it. But, boy, in times of crisis, it does indeed matter. So, yeah, thank you. I appreciate all of that. I will be sure I pass that along to everyone around me, because I think they, they need to hear it too, because all of that is just a product of a team that is so synced up right now that there's just this really, you know, continuum and conduit of energy that goes back and forth between us and the staff, and us and the families, and us and the kids. And it's turning into some really important loops. So, so thank you. I'm, it's very, I don't like the public, even positively, all of it's very awkward. So I'm almost better than it's remote, because I'm hoping you're busy watching each other and not me. So, thank you. I'm really grateful. I know you put a lot of time and energy, and they're, you know, really important pieces of feedback to me. And certainly, the parts that are validating are huge. So, and the growth is huge. I'm never opposed to inputting feedback on growth. I think you see that I'm, I live on feedback and wanting to do better and bring us to new places. So, thank you.
Thank you. So shall we move on to action items?
Yes.
Find that sort of unusual, given everything else we do. Maybe we ought to rename that. So I can pull up the language here for the
Yeah, this is, just I'll introduce it while you find the number, this is the formal vote to accept the donation from CEF that was presented at our last meeting. Thanks to generosity and ongoing support. It's a significant number.
Incredible.
But could I have a motion for both districts, that the Concord and Concord-Carlisle school committees vote to approve the CEF donation in the amount of $80,000, $80,768?
So move for both?
Seconded for both?
Thank you. With our great appreciation, if anybody else has anything to add. Amazing to me every year what the Ed Fund does and keeps doing, and the challenges they have this year. Figured out how to do the same, and my guess is the community will step up and contribute similar amounts of money, even though we won't have a big gala event to participate in. So a roll vote, about?
Aye, for both.
Aye for both.
Reenie.
Aye for both.
Mustafi.
Aye for region.
And Model.
With gratitude, aye for region.
And John, it's tonight for both. Heather, you want to do the next one?
Okay, so we are, I'll tee it up, but as we've all discussed, we've been looking at a new contract for our superintendent to lead us further into the future. As you all know, Court and I kind of played point on the discussions, and we've all agreed to terms. I'll let Court give a little bit of a highlight of what we're doing, and then we can all vote on it.
Sure. Should we start with a motion, Heather?
Sure.
So we don't have language for this, but I think it's a simple one, that I move that we, as the Concord Public Schools and Concord-Carlisle School Committees, enter into a new five-year contract for the period 2020 through 2025.
for the period 2020 through 2025.
Is there a second for that?
Second for both.
So before conversation, Dr. Hunter arrived here a year before I started my service on the school committee. There was a salary range at that time presented and worked with. And such was Lori's desire to come to Concord, Concord-Carlyle, that she was willing to come in at the lowest end of that range. If she regretted it, she didn't show it.
Not at all.
And we have elected to ask her to commit to a five-year contract with Concord and Concord-Carlyle. I'm a real believer that stability is important. And now more than ever, stability is important. But also, I believe that any good thing to excess is no longer a good thing. So we look carefully at what does stability mean? And does it mean that our superintendent will have the stability for the kind of growth that David speaks to, I think eloquently and importantly, but not have so much security that she's not on edge in a positive way on our behalf? And I believe that the school committee has the necessary trust in Dr. Hunter to say, maybe this is the kind of stability that we want that will continue to invigorate her efforts on our behalf. We have put before Dr. Hunter a contract that calls for a 1% increase in salary in the next year. We know that in these times, any increase in salary is going to be an uphill commitment on the part of this school committee. And in so doing, we speak for the towns that we look to for support. We believe it's a necessary investment. For the second year of this five-year, we are going to do in this contract what we wanted to do previously, but we insisted on postponing it. And that is to make an adjustment in the salary, not a cost of living increase, but rather a true adjustment. And that will bring Dr. Hunter into a $222,000 salary, still below the midpoint of three years ago. And then for the remaining three years, the school committee has the option, at its discretion only, to offer a cost of living increase with a cap on that. If the increases were to to reach the caps we've imposed, who knows? We don't know. That would bring Dr. Hunter to the midpoint of the range that was discussed when she was first hired three years ago. Hence, we believe this is a conservative, careful approach to continue to support Dr. Hunter. And in fact, to repeat the word, to reinvigorate her efforts and do so with the kind of stability needed for developmental change on her part and the district's part, mostly on the district's part because we've already spoken to the leadership capacity and the faith and trust we have in her abilities. So that's the background to this. And it was considerable work on the part of the committee to get here, but all very positive. And I am pleased to have this come before the committee for an official vote tonight. And I want to thank Dr. Hunter for your your full understanding of what this means. That's what's critical to us, your full understanding of what this means.
Thank you. I, thank you. Very appreciative. I feel as supported in this discussion as I did in the last. So if not more, it's quite an honor to be asked to stay and certainly a testimony to the work up until now. So, and five years, I do think it gives us all that. Court, I think you said it well, that lets us all feel like some unknowns aren't unknowns because we've got a path with some stability to it. So, thank you. I say that as I don't know how we're opening school in the fall. At least I know I'll be here to do that.
At least we know you'll be here to do that. We thank you for accepting our request to take a five-year contract.
We don't want any remorse later tonight.
And I guess I just, you know, I'm not somebody who job hops. You know, I did 14 years in my principalship, and four was the shortest I've done anywhere when I was assistant superintendent. And I just, I just know what happens in years three and three to 10, you know, three to eight, which is what you're so generously offering me. I just know what happens because the relationships are built, the trust is grown, and you really, you can hit a whole nother level of work. And so I'm just excited to have that opportunity. So, thank you.
Yeah, and you're here to receive the benefit of the feedback loops.
Yeah.
Where short timers don't get that.
No, you spend the first three years saying, I didn't know that. How did we get to that, you know? And, you know, I think you finally start to move past that. And the trust, you know, it does take years to build trust. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you and everyone who I think we've got that foundation now. And that's when you really start to take off.
Well, we're pleased, and we know a lot of people will be pleased.
And maybe you can learn to turn the lights on in Ripley. That was, that was a moment, yeah. I can't imagine how I, yeah. Yeah, that was a moment a couple of weeks ago when the lights are off, and I can hardly see you all because I've never had to do that by myself at night. Apparently, you know, we're so well-staffed that on the weeknights, I'm there very late, as you know, but the lights are on. I hope the next two months don't feel like five years, but, you know.
Right.
I think they're going to be a blink, actually, is part of the... That's probably right. Question, yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Let's make it official, should we?
Yeah. So roll call vote on this?
Yeah.
Aye for both.
Aye for both. But thanks.
And thank you for working on this from the rest of the committee. Rainey?
Aye for both. Thank you.
Modell?
Sorry. Aye for region.
Thank you, and Mustafi?
Definitely aye. Thank you, Lori.
And hard-felt aye for both. Johnston?
Thank you.
One more item. And Heather, why don't you do this? Because it's really a Concord item.
Yes, absolutely. That's true. So as we all know, we have two newly elected, soon-to-be members of our committee. There's a difference in the seats, though. As we all know, since you've all stepped down, one of them, Alexa Anderson, will be filling an existing committee seat that is considered vacant right now. So it's two years left on that seat. Because of that, we're able to vote Alexa in to participate in our meetings, but as a non-voting member. So both of those new members, both Alexa and Fatima Mesad, will officially take their seats as voting members after town meeting. But because one of them is refilling an empty seat right now, we can vote Alexa in to participate with us, even though she can't vote. So we thought we would do that right away and start to get her up to speed. And we also would love to have Fatima involved with us, obviously, as much as we can. And we're going to start to include them on information so that they can be up to speed on things as much as possible. So for that, this is actually a Concord vote because we basically vote to seat her in that way as a Concord School Committee member. And then by default, she then becomes part of the regional committee in the same way. So I would need a motion that the Concord School Committee seat Alexa Anderson tonight as a non-voting member of the school committee.
So moved.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Yes, we hope she has a stomach for meetings. They don't all last this long.
Or maybe the skill to shut us all up so they can get out more quickly.
I mean, we're getting out early.
Right. Only because we started an hour and a half early.
Thank you, Alexa.
Yes.
Some good luck.
Yes. All right, then. By roll call?
I just have one question.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead to the other.
This is not based on any thing in our policies. We're just deciding that this is good practice since we have an empty seat. Is that correct?
We actually looked at the bylaws, the town bylaws, and then had town council look at them. Lori, do you want to?
Yeah, I will weigh in just on that, just for process information. We did look at the school committee policy. We looked at the town-level documents. That led to the town manager reaching out to town council for an opinion. We seem to just have gotten to a situation which was kind of falling between processes. So this was town council's recommendation was... And obviously, everything's backwards with town meeting being so late and all of that. I think that had impact too. So town... That's something we need to fix. Yeah, yeah, no question. So this was town council's recommendation, given all those variables, because it didn't fit a policy exactly. The situation was just so odd. So, yeah, thank you for asking it. I don't think it needs to be written into a policy because, like I said, hopefully it won't happen this way again. The town of Concord needs to fix... Unfortunately, I think it's in the charter. That may be. That may be. I know all the documents have been out in front of the town clerk and the town manager, and finally, town council. And we landed here, so. All right.
It's funny that in the past, we've talked about the changing of the guard here happening at fiscal year end, which is a couple of months typically after town meeting. Yeah, now we're in the exact opposite.
Right, exactly.
All right. That's it. Thanks.
Any other questions? Then by roll call now. Booth? I think that was an aye. You're on mute, but I read your lips as aye.
Aye, thank you.
Rainey?
Aye.
Johnston?
Aye.
And Bout, aye. So Alexa, welcome. We get to have you, can't wait to have you a part of this. And we'll say the same to Fatima as soon as we can.
I just, one point of order, Heather, and I see Mike's still on the call. The select board has to have the same vote before she can participate.
That's right.
They have to stay on mute, Alexa, until they vote.
Okay.
I'll make sure it gets on our agenda as soon as we, as soon as we can.
Thanks, Mike.
That would be great. Thank you, Mike.
So to the chairs, can we very quickly discuss at least tentative date for next meeting?
Yes, that's true.
Do we go two weeks out? Is that...
So we've talked about doing that. I think, you know, the last time we were looking for urgent information from the state, which we now finally have, we talked about going to a default of every two weeks unless we need it more frequently. I don't think there's anything on the docket right now which would say we have to meet a week from now, unless I'm missing something. Anything, Lori or Waller or anyone?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Then let's say two weeks from today, which will be July 14th.
That's Steel Day.
Exactly.
I may have a problem joining that meeting, but I will make every effort. And I'm going to be away. I know there's cell coverage. So we may need to think about appointing somebody as chair for that meeting for the region.
Right, because David, the vice chair, won't be here.
So I guess I would propose, well, I'll probably either...
And Heather, just a quick, back to Alexa. She would not count toward a quorum, correct?
No.
No, she would not.
Okay.
But if I'm not there, we would still have a quorum.
No, I get that. I just wanted to confirm that.
And by that point, so by that point, there will be a new Carlyle School Committee member. And David, Carlyle will have met to appoint someone from Carlyle.
Carlyle will meet on the 8th and appoint two representatives, one of which we hope will be Eva, depending on her capacity for...
Right.
Okay.
Let me toss something out.
Maybe when you guys meet, David and Eva, when Carlyle meets, could you let them know that our next meeting will be the 14th so that whoever gets appointed to the region can plan for that?
Yep. You making a note of that, Eva?
Okay, that'd be great.
I'm going to be chatting with Christine, the chair, once we know who's on the committee and...
Okay.
Is that a 5:00 PM, the same?
Yes. Yep, 5:00 PM.
I'm shooting an email already.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we should be fine with a quorum then?
If we wanted to meet on Monday, I would be available completely. I don't know if you want to do that or not.
Monday, the 13th?
Yeah.
That's fine with me. Does that work for everybody else? Lori?
Fine.
If everybody can do it, that's a good idea.
So let's do it on the 13th.
Okay, the 13th then.
Be in conflict probably with the select board meeting in case we are interested in that. That's all.
Yeah, they made it for typically. So maybe if we could...
Because I...
Have the vote early in their meeting. Alexa could turn us on.
I'm not sure when that planned joint select board, school committee, I mean, finance committee meeting is, but I definitely think we would probably want to be there. I have no idea when that's planned.
Here, here.
Yes.
So I need to check some other...
It looks like Mike Lawson is still on. Mike, is July 13th a joint meeting with the finance committee and select board or just you guys? If he's still there.
He stepped away or something.
Maybe not. Okay.
Yeah.
Why don't we say, we'll double-check that. Let's say tentatively July 13th, Monday night at 5:00. And if there's a conflict with another joint meeting, then we'll come back and reschedule.
This is Mike. It isn't a joint meeting. It's just the select board on the 13th.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Very helpful.
But it's at 4:00.
Right. Okay, good. So we'll start an hour later. Okay. I think we're good then. Any other questions? What's that? Other than, I just want to, I want to thank David again because I think this is the last time we'll have you on a meeting with us. So we've said our words, but thank you for, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
And we wish you well on the select board.
Thank you.
Take a motion, no adjourn?
So moved for both?
Second for both.
Thank you. Bout?
Aye for both.
Booth?
Aye for both.
Rainey?
Aye for both.
Mustafi?
Aye for region.
Modell?
Aye for region.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody. Be safe.